Good evening, I will call our town in one of your February twenty twenty two. Tonight as always, we will be doing our pledge, so we have a special honor tonight to give you for the pledge. Tonight with Jay Carson. That's my song. Hi. I'm sorry.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, et endless for all.
So I listen in on that inspiring. Go to the Air Force Academy. Thanks, how did you join in our invitation? Father is always my picture, guidance, and make decisions on behalf of our community and our town and neighbors. Yes, they always bless all us and all of those that are first responders and things around the world safe from our. Our open forum tonight is Ashley Walker, eleven Main Street. Ashley, I know that you are here to speak on item four A. Would you like to speak now or later?
At that either.
Mr. Witter. First time.
And I just like to say that, you know, look at the council and the staff. Probably the CT and Molly and Tom. You know, we've had phenomenal talent. But I'd like to say that I've been working with John, this gentleman who's not here, Mike. He's over unpacking TVs right in the building. Few years I've worked with him, you know, he should do what he actually does. But he's phenomenal, he's done a great job for this town, and I can't praise him hard enough. This town owes him a big thank you. Thank you.
And Steve, Steve is very humble, but the same appreciation and thanks goes out to him and for all of his service, all of his volunteer hours and all of these times. K, you're great. Plus the great, great drawings that we get there.
Yes.
Next up this evening is our special presentations, proclamations, and awards. Item number A is the Williamer Police Department Award of Merit. It's the Orange County Sheriff's Officer Reserve Deputy Robert Knight. Chief of.
Thank you, Mayor. The town council members of the residents' office. First, Bob and I know each other way back from our Orange County Sheriff's Office days. He's been an ex-adjunct deputy sheriff, he's been both a full-time deputy and a reserve deputy, and he's active as a reserve deputy now. Just like we had reserve officers volunteer this time of the service for the community, which is just a tremendous task. So I would ask, if we have everybody from the meeting here today, I'll just ask that we kind of keep this session out of the meeting. We appreciate that. So last year, we had the opportunity to thank the individuals that helped us back in July of two thousand and twenty, when we had a, when we had a horrible incident in our town that we all were worried about. So last year, we actually did a nice appreciation ceremony for the Orange County Sheriff's Office and the other entities that were there at that moment, along with our officers. The safety family was here, Lisa is here tonight, and also Mason is there tonight. We appreciate you, we love you, we always make sure to support you guys. But during the course of our events last year, Bob's name has kind of got overlooked, and we want to make sure we recognize that. So Bob was one of the individuals who was there that night. On this day, we had issued him an award of merit, which is one of the highest awards that you can receive. So I'll read, I'll read all this award first. This award of merit is presented to the offices of nearby U.C.'s in their outstanding demonstration of teamwork where you were dedicated to the town. On July thirty of two thousand and twenty, the town of Williamer suffered a tremendous loss of two of our sheriff's residents on the non-inventable evil things or disorders. Long horse response required exceptional cooperation and resources. You made entry for the residents of that night while alive in private cell and fortress. You helped formulate a rescue team which rendered better play for an extra extraction of individuals and a ten-year-old victim called nine one one. You had the presence of mind to ensure the young victim wasn't witnessed any further violence. Once attending to the victims, you secured the inner residents, which resulted in a very good suspect hostage situation throughout the rest of the night. Your commitment to excellence and willingness to place yourself at harm's way in this time of need is greatly appreciated and commendable in the Sargey Visser Award, February of two thousand and twenty-two. Deputy Robert Knight, congratulations, thank you for your service.
I'd like to thank you all for this, this award. Not that we're publicly speaking, but thank you all for now. I'm glad it was able to help someone. I want to thank you all, everyone in your offices who are here. Item B tonight is orders ten congressional district, Jeff Cruz is going to do an introduction. Mr. Cruz, are you here?
I didn't ask you, Justin.
All right. Item C is the proposed private two-story bridge on Washington Bay at thirty-one Prime Street. That item has been pulled for this evening. Time items and public care. Our town council meeting at six oh eight, and we will open a public hearing at six oh eight P.M. as well. This is for the second reading, reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash. This is ordinance to adopt new property rights element and amend recreation and space elements for the town's comprehensive. This is an ordinance of the town, an ordinance of the town council, the town of Williamer, for pertaining to comprehensive planning, amending the adopted town of Williamer comprehensive plan pursuant to chapter one sixty-three. Ordis statutes to adopt new property rights element and amendment to recreation and open space element related to funding the park. Providing for legislative findings, adoption, codification, conflicts, severability, and effective date. At this time, anyone from the public here may provide a comment or wish. Would anyone from the public on this? Right? Seeing none. This is our public hearing at six oh nine P.M. We open our Williamer Town Council at six oh nine. Council, this item is a second read. Any questions, concerns you may have in the address items now? Otherwise, we will look for a motion to approve. Mayor, motion to approve the ordinance. Motion to approve from Constitution Day, right, the second, second. Second, Agent Williams. Council, any further comments, concerns, questions? Seeing none, we will begin going to council person D.
Hi.
Aye, 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 aye. And ordinance twenty twenty-one dash one passage notes. Thank you, council. Next up, council is a consent item agenda. This is eleven Main Street, C twenty-one dash ten. This is the residents, the Walker residents, a variance will allow reuse setback from the old I water line for the swimming pool. D R V recommended denial five to one. Also, you can put on this as a consent agenda item, or you may request that be pulled. We have further discussion on that. Mayor, excuse me, I believe the, the applicant here is. I'm going to hear from him, and it's a petition down to. Ms. Walker, eleven Main Street.
Very, thank you guys for hearing this request. Some of the information that was submitted to the D R V was reviewed, of course, but then submitted to you guys. Again, after the D R V meeting, I had also submitted some other items through grant permitting this in regards to the variance request. There were a few things that came up at the meeting, and again, it says in the letter that you guys did get a chance to read that prior to that the D R V could not answer, which is where it was established, the fifty-foot setback, and then what the other municipalities do as far as their setback requirements. So Okoye, One Garden, Ramon, being the closest to us, they're at twenty-five feet. So, you know, something to look at and consider in the future, maybe the near future, perhaps looking at that for the town of Williamer. Also, the fifty-foot setback, the earliest that can be found is nineteen ninety-one. Now, we don't know if that's any earlier. It could potentially be that Bob, Brad, who was the one who looked to see when it was. So there could be other properties that may have gotten variances since then. But on my actual canal, five Main Street got a variance or built a pool in nineteen ninety-five after the nineteen ninety-one setback, and it is seventeen feet from the normal high. I'm simply asking for twenty-six feet from the normal high. Twelve Oakdale was in two thousand and one. Twenty Oakdale was in two thousand and seven. And then ten Main Street, there was a comment on here, Brad, it says ten Main Street is not a lot. It says forty-foot strip. I don't want to give a call, is that saying that there was a variance for that one? I don't have the pool.
Yes.
Yes, I think that was Brad, what is his name, your town planner? Yeah, ten Main Street, actually, when you looked at that, it's up, it's actually the forty-foot right of what railroad strip there. So I believe the intent for that was actually eight Main Street, which is right there next to it that has a queue. So I think that's what that issue was.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for pointing mine out. So basically, one of the other things that one of the board members brought up is saying, well, you know, this is setting a precedence if we approve it for you. But it seems like the precedence has already been set. Again, I don't know the circumstances, but I do know that my house was built in nineteen fifty-five, and at that point, there was probably no chance of even the thought of putting a pool in or maybe the setback was only twenty feet. Who knows what it was in nineteen fifty-five? And frankly, when I bought my house, I was in my twenties, and I didn't even know what a permit was, let alone to ask if I could ever build a pool. I was just trying to get that house livable because it was original to the fifties when I bought it in, in two thousand and twelve. So basically, what I'm asking is, is nothing more than what these other folks have asked for and have been approved of. And again, there could be more houses along the entire chain of lakes in Williamer that could have had variances. These are just my direct surrounding neighbors. So I just want you guys to take that into consideration. Also, in my letter that specifies my hardship with COVID and saving the waters and, you know, just think about your approval on it.
Thank you very much. Rest is my view.
Thank you.
Brad, do you have anything further on this particular variance request?
I can't just, from the developer review board meeting, I just will let the board know there was quite a bit of discussion at it. I was also, I was not there, and one of my family was there, she did advise me of what occurred at that meeting. So there was quite a bit of discussion about this variance request and about the concerns about, you know, the other properties and things of that nature. But again, the D R V did by vote of five to one, if they do recommend denial, they did fine, or there was really not a hardship. What's important when you all review these variances, within your staff report is, within your code, you have the standard by which you are to review these. And that's your developer review board, as well, you as town council, that's how you review these variances. And this, I have this here for the meeting, just so everybody does hear it. What your standard that you consider for is, is the need for variance rises out of a physical surrounding shape or condition or other physical environmental conditions that are unique to property. Variance should be granted for conditions computed to the property and not the result of action of the property owner. That's number one. Number two is that there are practical or economic difficulties in carrying out a strict letter of the regulation. Number three is the variance request is not based exclusively upon the desire to reduce the cost of developing the site. Number four is a proposed variance will not substantiate increased congestion on surrounding public streets, the danger of fire or other hazard to the public. Number five is a proposed variance will not substantiate the damage property that is in or also be a central character of the areas surrounding the site. Number six is the effect of the proposed variance in harmony with the general intent of the land development code and the specific intent of the relevant subject area of this land development code. And finally, number seven is the variance will not encourage further requests or changes of such a land used for not being appropriate. So those are the conditions, or those are the findings that you make when you consider a variance. To, in approving a variance, you basically are making that they meet all seven of those conditions and those requirements. If they don't, that's when you make the motion or make a decision for denial. So that's, that's your standard by which you look at. Quickly, your code also says what you don't take into consideration. So it says what you do, which was the seven I just read. And then there's three where it says that you should not take these into consideration when you make your evaluation. Number one is that the implementation of the regulations would impose an economic hardship on the cost of a building or the project. Number two, that these regulations impose a hardship by decreasing the maximum density of a property in terms of the number of units or footage of buildings. And finally, number three, that other adjacent land structure of buildings not in performance of these regulations provide a rationale for lessening or application to this specific case. So the way your code is structured for variances, they have to, to find to prove it, they need to meet those seven standards, which are in the staff report. And then as you evaluate it, it also says in your code that those other three that you should not take into consideration. That's what your code says. At the end of the day, it's your council's decision on whether you want to approve this or not based on your evaluation of this request. So that's what I would present to you.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Ramos, approval or denial of a variance does not constitute residence, correct?
Yeah, I was just going to mention that Mayor, I had looked at the case law before tonight. The variance request must be reviewed on its own merits rather than on the basis of a previously approved variance. That's what Florida law says. Also, previously issued variances do not establish controlling precedent or constitute a basis to sustaining other variance applications.
Thank you, council. Appreciate that. Council, I think I'm going to start with councilperson Marty, who is our council liaison chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I was at the meeting. And my inclination is to side with the D R V because I believe that they chose the right path on this variance request in following the guidelines that they have. That said, Brad, if, at some point in the future, there was a lot of discussion about the setback requirements, that's about how, A, we didn't know when it was going to place. Do we know now when it was, when then?
Again, this walk testified too, and that is what I found, is the earliest that I can find it when the town adopted your current version of your land development code in nineteen ninety-one. That's, the fifty-foot setback is within there. I will also say that, and you, some of, you've been on the council for a while, in two thousand and sixteen, we did go through an amendment to your accessory structure ordinance. And there it also has the fifty-foot setback for pools. I will say though, that was already there when we did that amendment in two thousand and sixteen. We didn't change that, we didn't add that, that was already in place. So it hasn't been placed for, for quite a few years, that fifty-foot setback.
So the other municipalities that were mentioned are, their setbacks are twenty-five feet.
That's my understanding of this.
Well, I think ours is more stringent due to the water quality of the lakes issue. And, and the applicant and I did discuss this after, after the meeting, and, you know, there, there are obviously exceptions made for variance, but I think the issue, and I don't know because I didn't talk to anybody on the D R V after the fact, but it's such a large request for a variance of twenty-eight feet, not fifty. You know, typically, you might get a couple of feet here and there. But with the amount of space being requested, I believe that was a determining factor. So I had another resident had asked me a question earlier about these types of variance requests that involve close proximity to the lakes. Are we, are we using our new water consulting for any feedback on these types of variance requests? Or can we start doing that and get their input?
Yeah, this request was brought to our attention at two o'clock today. So again, it wasn't enough time for us to review that and test it, we got a late solicitation on there, but we would have been, I mean, just.
Well, I think that'd be good going for. And if in the future we do modify the, the setback requirements for specifically for pools or if we make, if we, you know, we do modify for some specific exceptions, are they able to come back and reapply for a variance if?
I believe so. I don't think your code has any prohibition of somebody coming back to reapply in the future.
Like if we, at some point in the future, make ours twenty-five feet, I don't know.
Right. Correct. If you were to change it where they would no longer need a variance, then they would not need to come back for you then. They could just permit it because that's what the code now says.
And the fifty-foot setback is personally for the waterfront. Standard lot is still twenty-five feet, interior, standard interior lot. Council, any further questions or comments?
I do just to verify, now, first of all. So I, 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 I think the interpretation of the law, their counselors probably directed more of a question I had answered earlier. My concern was there was two pools for older homes, the fifties and sixties respectively, that got pools between nineteen ninety-five and I think one was two thousand and three. So I would assume being that code changed being in nineteen ninety-one, there was a variance that had to be approved during those times, but nobody can locate set variances. So just to make sure I'm understanding right, I, I fully understand that we cannot use adjacent properties or lands to base decisions off of, but these quasi judicial type hearings, we're not supposed to go back and take a look at or review in regards to precedent. My only concern is consistency and lawsuits, so on and so forth.
You're correct, you care and you need to look at the vast space on that piece of land, or that's what you're supposed to look at.
And I will say, in the last ten years, you know, since I've been doing this, I know we have been pretty darn consistent, especially on waterfront setbacks, and very careful. I know that the courthouse house, the one down here on Main Street, a couple of houses down from Molly's, we have been pretty strict on it. I mean, we make them a few feet here and there.
Right, and, and definitely during my tenure, we've had one or two that we denied, but we've been, they were houses. So, so those are houses that were either built by the applicant, they could have, you know, potentially did something on site plans, or the house was built after the nineteen ninety-one. Because I did go through this issue with the house that I had for sale, that everybody was interested in putting a pool in there, and my reply to them was, you cannot buy this house, in particular, if you want to put a pool in, right? Because I knew what, what, what does a house look like.
Well, there was another one on Main Street that we denied.
Across the street, correct?
Yeah, down here.
Oh, right.
Forty, forty.
They ended up putting a smaller pool in.
Yes.
So that was, that was newer than nineteen ninety-one, now, correct? So that was my, there was just two that I found without that location, or were houses, and I knew given some. So I'm just trying to, you know, making sure there's some consistency there.
I think that it has been. I think I would go back to saying, you know, what we talked about before, if we were talking about ten Main versus. Right. You know, so in, actually, I'm taking a look. But in terms of, you know, giving up twenty-six feet, but you had twenty-four, twenty-six feet from the I water mark. I think I would be even pretty strict on that, but again, you have council's, right?
No, absolutely, and I just, I, I know what's been said, that, you know, not enough information is being given on this particular case. So just want to make sure everybody on the same page, has the same information, etc. And I'm just curious, what, is there a deal process for if new information was to be found by the applicant to where we deny? You know, is there, or is it a reapply for a variance?
I would suggest a reapply. Brad, you should say differently, and then some of the other factors that you look at in your code could also be addressed in that reapplication by the, by the applicant.
I'm not going to say the case more, but it's, it's been said that there's, you know, all the facts are not what it presents, so.
Ms. Walker, I did see your hand. Let me finish up the conversation with council, and then if there's any questions or if you want to make other. Council, proceed then.
Yeah, just one thing, we're going to reevaluate the setback. You and I spoke this morning, or earlier, that's how I can phrase. They want to consider a allowance for elevation. I understand this property has a seawall versus a gradual sloping beach. Obviously, that setback is, is a little bit different. I think the intent of the fifty feet is a setback from a naturally occurring elevation change into, into the body of water, this is a little bit different scenario. So we probably need to look at a, kind of a allowance for that as well.
Mayor, I could just a little ladder more with the, our conversation about, and with the seawall, what happens is, under your code, when someone installs a seawall, it does require a swell on the backside of the seawall. So it does, you know, change that interface with the water body. And if a pool were to be approved of the variance, so they would have to expand that stormwater system to account for the pool as well. So that's how the seawall kind of comes into play.
Council, any further questions, concerns, or thoughts? Seeing none, Ms. Walker, I'll let you take the podium again and just make a couple.
I'd say something good, question or?
Yeah, Mr. David kind of addressed it, there is a seawall in place. So it is different than a natural sloping, which I did have before. In fact, again, going back to the letter I presented, it's different than, you know, the chemical runoff and, and anything that would have had normal runoff. Again, this fifty foot is all if, what, the pool fails, right? The pool leaks and, and it goes into our lake system. So not only do I have a four-foot seawall, but as Brad was saying, I do have a stormwater retention area as well, which a lot of these older homes who got pools prior to that probably weren't required to install those. So, and then of course, if I had to make it bigger, that's something I would, I would do as well. Another point I want to go back to was if there is a water quality person that could be invited into this conversation and could look at this further, my hopes would be that you guys, instead of denying tonight, would table it. I know people had brought up discussing this, or me bringing it back. This, I don't know, I mean, if you guys have applied for variance before, it's not a cheap or short or easy process. So instead of a denial, I would rather you guys table it until we can get all of the pertinent people involved to really get some of these questions answered. Had I known all of this last time at the D R V, I would have asked them to table it as well until we got this information of the. Had I known all of this last time at the DRB, I would have asked them to table it as well until we got this information of the. Setback requirements and the other municipalities, because I don't know if that would change their decision or not. So, you know, I don't think anybody knows, but it would have been nice to have had an information or decision with me.
Well, I mean, I think so, and I certainly understand, and I'll check with Counsel Ray most to see if you can just table this for now. But the the issue and the rules and the and the code remains the same, it is what it is as it is here as we sit today. Now, that does not mean that it will be that way forever, it may be more stringent, it may have some variability based on seawalls, et cetera. So um also, you know, age of homes, things like that, um but as we sit here tonight, the code, it is the code, so. Um I don't know that, you know, I won't speak to what other municipalities do because I, we don't enforce their their rules.
Sure.
I certainly understand where you're coming from, I appreciate you being here tonight, um and we want to solve your perspective as well.
Yeah, and just again, sort of, there is no other place on that property to put it, my deck sits at the fifty foot mark. So unless I tore my deck out and put it right literally against my house, which it would still be a smaller pool. I don't have the option that some of these other properties did, that are newer homes, which is to just make a smaller pool. There's just no way it it will fit. The only option that we had looked at would be in the side yard, but we plan to do an addition there. So the only uh option we have in the short term is we wanted a non permanent pool. It would be a above ground pool that would sit on the side yard that we do uh from Main Street.
Thank you very much, appreciate you being here tonight. Counsel, if we have the, can we table this and park it once it's here or, you know? I just want to make sure that we're we're good to the letter of the law.
That is the option of the council, if you want to table it and and discuss it again, that's absolutely fine. Just table it to a daytime certain, and then you don't have to advertise it, that's what we love to do.
Would you want to table it to, or revert it back to DRB, or would you just keep it within town council?
I, you know, my. My thinking is that tabling it, the way that the timelines work for these type of changes, tabling it is not going to. Give the applicant what she would like, um even just in terms of the time it takes to to relook at codes. To getting input from the water specialists, to get through legal, to advertise the changes, I mean, you know. These things take time because we don't want to do them, number one, we don't want to ask code change to to address one particular situation. If we look at the codes, we tend to look at them holistically, you know, anything that relates to setbacks. Um anything that relates to setbacks with older homes that have less than fifty feet, you know, I mean, I. I hear the discussion, I hear the argument, but also we have to balance that with the protection of the lakes, and that's very critical. To, you know, it's not just about making sure that the pool doesn't fail, it's about how we address drainage and water infiltration opportunities. Before it gets to the channel lakes, so it's just a bit more complicated and there we are. So I I would be, personally, I just want to see if that was an option, I would be hesitant to do that because. We can continue to discuss it, I don't think we would have the tools to enact a change, I don't think the applicant anymore happy than. Anywhere tonight uh in the next three months. Counsel. Do you need to table it or?
Just just a quick question.
Counsel, person down.
You reference three months, what's what's driving that three month?
And I, when I say three months, I mean, it's just a random timeline, because these things don't happen here in three months, you know, and uh. I can't even, we couldn't even advertise it, get it amended if it would take six months at least.
It may just be generally that the timeframe for a variance process through the town from start to come to is three months.
Right.
My concern though, there is, you know, I don't think staff or council has got the input of the the specialists in this matter. Um I would like to hear that before we do vote on this this.
I mean, certainly we can table uh, we can table this conversation until we speak with the uh with the water specialists, that we can do for sure. That 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 at least has a finite, you know, objective, but in terms of the actual, you know, zoning and and uh ordinance changes. That would be required to uh reduce the setback and modify the setback, um that takes a little longer. But certainly, Counselperson, I understand.
That's my question, does it count towards the impervious surface?
You have to.
I can, I will, I'm just curious.
Otherwise, we don't.
That's fine, broadly, mainly through private field street, Winnebago, Florida, I just want to know if it counts towards the impervious surface for the whole property? And if that has been calculated at this point, especially with the mention of wanting to add an addition in the future. The pool could add me back, couldn't negate me being able to add an addition if it exceeds the rules, so.
So we certainly have the impervious ratios for for this piece in part, but we don't, we wouldn't take into account any future that would be on the actual.
And they just said verify, yeah, yes, pools and the the water of the pool under your code does count against impervious. As proposed before you today, it's under the forty five percent threshold.
Right, thank you for that, and thank you for that input as well, yeah, we always are mindful of the overall ratio.
Okay.
Counsel. So basically, I'm looking for a motion either to table until we can speak with the water specialists, um or council can vote to approve or deny.
Mayor, I think we should table until we have a special with our water, with management council.
And that would be for date certain March eighth sixteen.
From Counselperson David, uh Counsel, we have a second.
Question, does that change um the code though, so in order to get the specialists, we still have to?
Doesn't change the code, it's still.
Right, so we still have to do that process, but we'll have more information, is that basically the word?
Yeah, so um yeah, so it would not, of course, change the code, it may give you more information that council will want to consider. In the in in the consideration of the variance itself.
I have a question, just to be clear, we're not suggesting just go back to DRB or back to DRB, is that correct?
You could do that, but that is, that was not a motion. Yeah, I agree, I think they've made their their intent clear, all right, so I'm looking for a second, I won't discuss it too much within the second motion. Counsel, did we have a second, uh the second, second from Counselperson Zap. Counsel, any further discussion? Begin voting, Counselperson Marty.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Counsel, motion carried, again, please.
This this item will be um heard on March eighth sixteen at the town council, by Main Street. They certainly, and then each year, having to readvertise this, um for the exam.
Thank you so much, appreciate it, you know, on current additional costs, thank you. Thank you. Next up, Counsel, under new business, uh town council meeting minutes, January eleventh twenty twenty. Staff, there's a minute's approval, motion.
Motion to approve?
Counselperson Marty.
Second.
Second, Counselperson Williams, comments, Counsel? Not to begin voting, Counselperson Williams.
Aye.
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 Very soon, yes, thank you, Counsel. Uh resolution ordinances for approval and reverse grading, this is resolution uh twenty twenty two dash zero one. This is the town of Winnebago adopting Orange County local mitigation strategy resolution. We don't need a hearing tonight, I think it's called.
No, it's just a resolution, so just the reading of the resolution, knowing about, I could have attached three on page policy.
No, I don't, I have to read that note on that strategy, it's too much, uh thank you, I appreciate that. So Counsel, basically what this does is this allows us to enter into the Orange County local mitigation strategy resolution. Which allows us to have mitigation projects, which. Uh leave her motion to approve, Counsel.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, Counselperson Williams.
Second.
Second, Counselperson. Counsel, any further discussion?
Oh, is there gonna be a second reading?
No, it's just resolutions.
Resolutions, so that's. So we have second, I just want to make sure we didn't have any further questions, so I'm sorry. All right, we'll begin voting, Counselperson Marty.
Aye.
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 Aye. Uh resolution twenty twenty two dash zero one, uh town of Winnebago adopting Orange County local mitigation strategy resolution. Is approved, yes, by the town council. Um next up, Counsel, is uh the appointment for long range planning committee of Mr. Greg Anderson. Fine appointment. Counselperson David, do you like to say it?
Uh this is a, is a replacement for Miss Molly Rose, who's gonna be taking counsel for your swing, uh so.
So Miss Rose is an upgrading. And she kind of smiled a little. I'll say, all right, so um Counselperson David, we'll consider that in your motion, if that's acceptable, I mean, that's okay for approval. Uh and second from Counselperson Marty, Counsel, any further questions? Um seeing none, we can vote, Counsel.
Aye.
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 Uh our long range planning committee appointment of Greg Anderson. Um under contracts and agreements, item D one and two, uh item one is a feedback of the F dot district five contract for the X. E five, X zero zero, there, yes. The application in office for DRB, voting for DRB also. Did I say DRB, that's my bad.
That was L R P.
Long range planning. And to inspect DRB on his actual. Was he on, I don't think he was on. I thought he was gonna be on for the year, apparently he mentioned on, and so either way, I thought.
We didn't have an opening at the last DRB meeting, um so we'll present to DRB at the next meeting, so say it's just for L R P. And the next one, March, you do point together.
All right, so maybe we'll get a two for one from Mr. Anderson. We appreciate his service for sure. No, no, I appreciate it, he was honest, I do appreciate that. Um so item number one, under contracts and agreements, D one, this is the feedback of the Ford Department of Transportation District Five contract. This is uh E five, X zero zero, um this is with Horizon Land Management for stormwater de-silting video services. Counsel, do you want to comment on these two contracts, or would you go ahead and do some information on that? Thank you.
Absolutely, so one of the most critical components to ensuring that our roadways and our stormwater.
You turned all of our microphones on.
One of the critical pieces to ensuring that we are managing stormwater properly and keeping our roadways clear. Is that we are de-silting our stormwater devices. The current contractor has not been as responsible as I would like, and so we would like to go ahead and have authorized piggybacking with. Um Horizon Land Management Services, um they reached out to us, we're very eager to help us, partner with us. And come up with a plan and a strategy and attack for these structures throughout the year. So we are recommending approval, the C D N T back in this contract is the best way for the town to do that.
On these, um so we pick it back on the contract, which is always sensible. Um how then, uh will we see fast orders or or we give you an N T or?
So what happens is we provide them with the the structures that we have, and they base their pricing off of the F D O T contracts. That they just um had an order to them, and what we will do is, what you're authorizing we do tonight is actually work with the attorney. They come up with a contract based off of the piggyback.
Absolutely, let me very.
Your way, the amount that is requested, do you not actually match the budget amount that you approved, you know, this is your joint one?
Or set surface.
Correct, same thing with sidewalks.
Right, thank you, just wanted to make sure we were, just to make sure we had an N T somewhere, so we didn't get ourselves sideways accident. Counsel, looking for approval, item one is the piggyback of F dot district contract, E five, X zero zero, their motion to approve. Motion to approve, Counselperson David, that's their second.
Second.
Second, Counselperson David, Counsel, any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we'll begin voting with Counselperson David. Aye.
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 Aye. And one, there is an endless leak, and item two is a piggyback of Orange County contract Y two one dash one oh eight one B. Condo Construction Corporation for sidewalk repair and maintenance, um attachments are recommended. Staff, crew, same situation as prior, any further additional information from Counsel on that?
No, just that I think that this is the smartest way for us to go right now, considering the current environment for contractual concrete, special concrete.
Yeah, so we end up getting the price of the county versus going out.
Exactly.
And makes us a little bit efficient.
Yeah, and as you can see, we did our due diligence, we did compare it to the company that we've used before, and it's several dollars cheaper per square linear foot, I'm sorry, so it it makes sense.
Counsel, looking for a motion to approve, uh bear a motion to approve, which should approve, Counselperson David, second.
Second.
Second, Counselperson Williams, uh Counsel, any comments, concerns, questions?
Uh I just have a general question about uh capability or liability for companies or vendors. Uh contractors who park on our sidewalks, for instance, uh when they were running the underground utilities last week. They broke the water lines and there was, there was probably seven or eight trucks, including dump trucks and trailers with dump trucks. That were on the new sidewalks that we just had down here on Sixth Front Road, so is there any? I mean, obviously, we have to see the break occur or, you know, have some evidence, but. Are we holding these contractors accountable, or I think we're pouring thicker concrete now on the sidewalks to accommodate that both or both?
No, what staff does if we have a right of way application, which we generally do, we, John and I go out and do an inspection, make sure everything's okay. If they haven't submitted a right of way application, we don't know that they're doing the work, if you let us know, we'll go out there and and get on them right away. And let them know they're supposed to have that, but John and I generally do go out and make sure that they have not um broken the sidewalks. And John and I actually talked recently, what I like to do, which I did in the previous city, was we required, especially the large communication companies. We require them to take photographs of sidewalks before and then submit that as part of the right of way application process. So I think he and I are gonna implement something like that.
We must have the most popular right of ways in the world, there are always something, I mean, where they're good at now, they have no curves. Yeah.
They are supposed to repair it, especially um Duke Energy, anybody else that drives over those sidewalks, they are responsible for that.
All right, thanks, I think, well, thank you, Counselperson Marty. Um any further uh questions or comments from Counsel? Seeing none, we'll begin voting with Counselperson.
Aye.
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 And item two, which is the piggyback of Orange and contract.
Thank you.
Counsel, that brings us to the end of our formal agenda, um we will go ahead now with our mayor and council committees on the courts. I wanted to um certainly, I was a lot of line in that, so. All their work and effort, um and it has been, it's always challenging for that, and this year was like. Like juggling and trying to pull the event off at the same time, all of the uh economic impacts and the challenges, of course, of COVID. And and restaurants and service industry still continue to struggle mildly with staffing and having resources to participate in that. So certainly, I will say how much we appreciate it, and I heard it's an amazing event, so. Um and you, you've been like bettering, going through all this, so.
Fairly, you're the judge.
Steve, do you like to give an update on on where we ended up with this, or you all get to?
You can do it, you're the lady. You were the.
Okay, ladies, I don't know, it's our mind.
Um again, that's a. Me, me, the site development, right, I don't know, we had folded all the eight hundred and fifty chairs, we did, we did that.
Right, twice or once, it's definitely.
Work time, so we go.
Did not, but.
Eaters, tables, and so it was fantastic collaboration by all the volunteers and staff and the committee. Eaters, tables, and so it was fantastic collaboration by all the volunteers and staff and the committee and public works and town staff and everyone that contributed and of course the vendors and the participants and the wine store. It was just amazing. And the weather, especially the weather, because we were very nervous about that, but it turned out to be fantastic. It was one of our best events, even though it was thirty percent smaller than the last time we did it two years ago. And still raised a very significant amount of money for our charities, so our select charities or local. So it was great. Good job, TT. Our eighth year, right?
Eight, I mean, we raised a little over a hundred and thirty-five.
Hundred and thirty-five, okay. That was after buying five thousand more in tents. We had nine thousand square feet of tent covered everything.
Fantastic. Thank you, councilperson Marjorie, and certainly thank you to all the sponsors, all the organizations that participate, from breweries to Tim's Line to all the restaurants. I can't go through all the restaurants because I'll certainly forget them. And then there's others of other sponsors and supporters. Ski Notique and everything else. So we'll do a much more formal appreciation and wrap up. Okay, well, we may do a more formal wrap-up after everybody relaxes a little bit. Certainly most of us should. So just real quick on our, some of our mitigation projects. All of the, so those items that we had faced one answer for. The FEMA wants to see those again. That can take six to nine months. So we did have some conversations last week with Florida Department of Emergency Management Director Kevin Guthrie. You can see how we can work on that, council, because we don't want to delay. Also, there's time limits and deadlines for those projects to get done, so we'll all be working together to mitigate the challenge of mitigation. Getting those projects done around. Also, one of the, one of the concerns that we discussed with those guys as well and the FEMA administrator was the fact that in today's world, your cost escalations, you wait nine months, your cost escalations are either terrible or then you end up having to do a cost overrun and that gets even more complicated. So we're going to see that if we can pass down some support from FEMA to record to state that will just be assigned to our mitigation projects. That that's our ending and we'll hope that that will be able to be done soon. Appreciate staff staying on top of that, but that's definitely a state initiative. One of the mitigation projects is scratching their head doing the same thing right now. That's all I have. Any other further council reports?
Just a quick from a long-range, I think this past week, making some good efforts to work with staff on promoting sustainability throughout the town. Brings good ideas to bear to work with both public works and the rest of the staff agency. In addition, we discussed the boathouse way forward. That would be accomplished into the reputation of the boathouses.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Councilperson Marjorie?
I have one more, I'm sorry. Tree Board had a fantastic free giveaway, drive-through tree giveaway event. We gave away a hundred and twenty-four-ish trees, shrubs, understory items and thank the robbery for our breakfast, which they got us from a coffee and also volunteers from Olympia High School, Interact Club, Windermere Prep, and all the volunteers worked on this event. It was another success and I think we found our sweet spot giving away trees. Park in the parking lot and drive-through was great. And then the other items, a lot of sixteen trees at the end. Apparently we don't have a truck, but that's why. Susan, I also thank you very, very much for the great, much appreciation to your charity. Good job.
The additional we had elders this coming contact directed. Elders, if anything, we're getting around. These are the trees and elder lunch, so. Got it going on, thank you. All right, seeing no additional council meetings on the courts, we'll go to our staff reports. We'll start with town management.
As you know, there's been a lot of activities. Last week and starting on Friday, we started a little over to new solution, new facilities, a number of facilities. I do want to thank public works staff, all the MSF, police department. Tom, it's given, as Stephen said, I would like to thank Stephen, which is all he's been volunteering all the time. Putting up paintings, trying to figure out what these CDs are, so on and so forth. But again, it took an entire team to make sure that I've been ready to do it. But I want to thank Tom Street for, Paul Burke for their dedicated hard work on the conference tables, additional tables as well. We'll be identifying those with Ronson Plax to make sure that we can sit that table in every court and see if that table on our work. But we will be having probably a boathouse sometime in March. We didn't rush it. We want to make sure that it's a place. We still have some delays as far as the additional furniture items that we want to be lived in before we had it, we come over, we'll have a grand opening hopefully sometime in March, but we don't find a set date and then have that dictate how fast to move. I want to make sure that everything's right, we'll be glad every year. On Wednesday, Thursday, we do have the Winter Manger School students coming by, so we have them learning about the police department, fire department, the old schoolhouse, the women about civics from the Maranai, and also I believe councilman Marjorie's gonna be stepping in Monday as well as deputy chief. So we'll be making sure that we teach them government, all the services that we require. Town management details will be sent out to you probably tomorrow, so we have this cleared by March, that's that time of the year. And I'll do myself a value vision as well. Over the last, I would say sixty days, we've been sending out a lot of RFPs and RQs, as you were correct, it took a long time. Took ages during the COVID period just to make sure that we're staying in the status quo. We have an RFP for the food truck coordinator, we have RFP for building permitting and special services, we have an RQ for alcohol planning services, RQ for legal services, and RQ for lawyer language we had meeting about this morning for the breeds. The town management committee, it'll be Thursday, seven P M, the Winter Festival Foundation event, and I have that on April second. We have that at around St. Patty's Day, but due to kind of time constraints, we just decided to push it off to April second, let's change the name or the type of theme, still to be determined. We're looking at April second and partnering with Winter Mering Brewery as well as some other partners as well, putting it in. The first one second, as councilperson David said, you have a workshop discussing the boathouses. We are in the process of scheduling another workshop. It's going to be with even more associates as well as the project managers for the five hundred block. That would be their first of three workshops with the town council. And that's the last workshop prior to your hardship, but we'll make sure that that's a number, or huge chance, and Rose will be a part of that workshop as well. Again, that's even the five hundred block. I said on the day that on March eighth, which is the day of your next town council meeting, nine AM, board of county commissioners will be discussing the revisions to chapter eight, which will create the storm area and the motorized exclusion zones for, so we'll keep that as a handle as well.
So on the eighth, what time do you put that on the engine?
It has that nine AM voting news.
Right, but at least it's nine AM, so sometimes the suckers go late and we double it up, but that should work.
Yeah, and there's a summary that we can get on there, but again, the more contact you have or outreach you have with your county commissioners in there, it's probably much appreciated, so they see the support for this. That's what we're on for, I would say about sixteen months now.
Absolutely, and for all those the Bird Island situation has really come to a situation that is, it's not healthy for a lot of people. That deaths, you know, at least one death out there. We all hear the music on the weekends, you know, we're not anti have a good time, but it's got to come to some resolution here. So I hope is, is that, you know, participate, participation? So for participation level with our, with our local commission. We're going to blow something up on social media. We really need to have this passed. We really need to regain some control over the sensitive areas on the island and just as well as a path forward that allows quiet peaceful enjoyment of the channel lakes. I mean, it's really important for step, and it's been years since we've been thinking so. Certainly, I hope that we, a lot of support from our town restaurants. CT, you've got to use the mic, but you're welcome to come up.
So, but on that note, like you said, social media, sort of, CT Allen, three or five Palm Street, I don't do this much. So I sent in about the Channel Lakes Advisory Board, so we're following this pretty heavily. And I just met with our commissioner, Nicole Wilson, just yesterday. She's coming to the next Butler Channel Lakes Advisory Board meeting, so maybe I should send out an email to everybody I know. But if you tend that one, this is on our agenda as well, because we've sent letters and our recommendation for this. And we've been waiting for this new coverage forever.
Right.
But that's the place where we need to voice your concern and support Nicole. She's really trying to push this thing through.
Yeah, and let's get with Diane on that and make sure we do our part. She's already on top of it. You know, but it's funny, I see things go nuts on social media. This is one that's really important that we do right. Oh, it's okay, I do see some hands. I'd love to hear from you, but just jump on up. Susan, right under you. The date, I believe, for, for the, for the council, for the commission meetings, March eighth. Nine AM is the intended time. Butler Channel Lakes Advisory Board meeting date is?
Monday, the twenty-first.
Monday, the twenty-first.
But I will make sure about that, because we've been switching.
And it's definitely Monday.
Yeah, it's been going on Tuesday, so I know that's.
We'll get the date out.
I will send it to.
We'll get the date out on all public sites and make sure that everyone.
Hi, everybody. I'm Andy B, T P six, Butler Street. I just want to come up as, you know, a resident and also co-owner of a growing company. This is something that's very important to us as well. Not only happy Brandon and all of our family members with Brandon go responsibly, not just train responsibly and not just personally, I was forced to say that. Still, I think Gregory Robinson, thanks, thanks, Robert. But we had to, we had to go with the second aspect of the country. But on top of that, we started a charitable arm on Berusa and it's something that we want to take up as well this year with helping with efforts on our own. Not only things like that, but also educating people that is a natural birth sanctuary and we need to, in respect, our indigenous families.
Things are there.
Sure. Speaking of workshops. They'll cut through. Instead of you having to plan for one in March, I think, for this one?
Yeah, once I get the thirty. Yeah, once I get the thirty days of input, then I'll have the public workshop where we get the public input based on the data and then take it to LRP.
I see if you find that March workshop, which would be the fourth.
Well, yeah, the March workshop is going to be the fourth Tuesday of the month. So I would tend to do a plan for that one, maybe the town council workshop. This is for doing a public workshop, just for public input. Maybe some time between that, as well, give them about a ten days notice. By making sure the door hangers and so forth, but then make sure that the data is available for them to review, require some of the comments. So the progression would be, once that data, set up a public workshop, get their input based on the data represented to them and then take it to LRP so they have all the information not only from the stats that we get, but also from the comments. And then have a town council workshop after that.
Right, right.
So, so I guess the public comment, the shreds, I guess would be, that would be in March.
Yeah, it could be anytime in March, it's not a time limit, I'd be surprised.
And then we'll get a send date, I would probably.
Yeah, I just want to do it from March eleventh through the eighteenth, that's spring.
And then do an update on our ancient mills that get the water. That the mills, would you say that get the water?
Not yet. Yeah, we're meeting up with F D U D. Because that was the second round when we asked for the best original to go back. So if that is not moving forward through appropriations or through the budgetary process, they will get back in touch with us. And they'll set up a meeting with the District Five Secretary and see if there's other avenues that we can try to source avenues to receive additional funds for that project. If not, we're looking at probably funding in year three. So the more times you ask, the more you get involved with that.
Absolutely. So we've had a busy couple of weeks in public works. One thing I will mention, since it's been a hot topic this evening, is there will be a lake cleanup event on February twentieth at one thirty. We started at Turner Park and our lakes management coordinator will be facilitating that for us and I'll be there as well. We've assisted with wine and dine and also the tree giveaway in the last few weeks. We have been making preparations for the move and then we had a big hand in making sure the move happened Friday, Monday. We want Windermere Recreation Center with the parks and tree board to develop a plan of action to improve, retain, and replant some trees there. So we'll be having a plan for that there shortly. We assisted with the receipt of the playground equipment to Windermere Recreation Center this week. We prepared potholes at Sixth and Conroy and Windermere. One of the things we've been working to finalize, I wanted three piggyback items on there this evening, but I haven't quite gotten to the end with middle sex on the paving, but I hope that I'll bring that to you all in March for approval. And then the fertilizer ordinance, we've adopted Orange County's fertilizer ordinance and they're making changes. They were meeting on that today, the board of county commissioners, so we'll see what happens with that. And we may be bringing that to you all at the next meeting for approval as well, since we have to follow their ordinance. And then that's all that I have this evening.
Thank you very much. Appreciate everything that's been. Councilor Ramos.
Mayor, I don't have anything specific this evening. Next month I will go over some little snippets from the legislative, what's going on there and then you run through the meetings.
I'll be looking forward to this. Ed, Ed, Mel, are you serving any candy?
Chief. We were great. We handled a lot of items already, but we do our two thousand five line made in report. That's how I should have sent out to you guys today and after doing the safety watch, we posted on website as well like normally is. We're excited to be in the new facility. Get everything settled in there. One additional thing, the Winter Festival Foundation Foundation, as you know, we were having a board get-together last month. We raised some volumes for residents as well, the Mason Party, so we're real happy to be a part of that. And please know that, my, their family, they're excited about that. Also, I think Robert mentioned it, but April second, Winter Festival Foundation event, so if you mark that down, we will see everything, everybody better have.
Give everybody a chance to recover from volunteering and find none, you have a great attitude. This is Bert Walter. Anything from your end of the house?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. I did see that we have the City Nature Challenge twenty twenty-two.
Yes, this is a posting and we'll make sure we advertise. It is again a central Florida not sponsored event, but it's part of our annual kind of awareness. I, where we did it last year, what we do is you download this app called iNaturalist and from the time from April twenty-ninth through May second, what you do is just take pictures of various plants or examples that you see. And you don't have to have a green thumb or be, you know, no any type of snail or snake or anything that you see is actually good. you know, snail or snake or anything, you see, and it's actually good, because I see a next to all time, where I'll kind of say this. If you're going to take a picture using that app, it'll identify authority, so it takes a lot of hard work out, if not, it'll be submitted to a group, and maybe we'll identify. So what they do is they get a feel for what type of vegetation is natural to this area, and what's starting to be invasive to this area, and they use that data to help with creating new programs or policies to help retail some of that stuff. Whether you see a bunch of rosy pepper, or you see this type of invasive species as far as a plant and or animal, you know, and they have discovered new species through this type of competition, so we start to this advertisement is hard, probably in early April, but it's from April twenty-ninth through May second, after that, you upload those to their specific event site, and then they, whoever has the notes, I guess, let's just thumbs up, so. It's just a fun way to learn you out, to make sure your friends and family are doing this.
Answer on next word is always watermelon cinnamon, or a cookie. All right, counsel, anything further for the good before? That fest, that fest. That ten?
Means March fifth.
March fifth, all right, all right, don't forget that fest. Thank you all, counsel, we appreciate all, everything, and we'll return at seven eleven P M.